I think they're on, aren't they? I'll start the video. Okay, minutes of the Mark VI meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on financial report? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, first up, we have a discussion with T2 Systems Parking Review. Kirsten Brown Irwin, are you on?
I'm here.
All right.
Thank you for having us today.
Fantastic. We want to learn a little bit more about parking systems and I guess, do you have a presentation for us or do you just want to talk about it?
Yep, I'm going to introduce your regional sales manager who will be doing the presentation and help you on your journey with us going forward. And her name is Jody Vakas and yes, she has a PowerPoint to share as well.
Okay, I see Jody up here in the top right-hand corner for us. Very good.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm going to share my screen. Actually, I think you just have to give me permission to share my screen.
It's, I think it's available to you now. Maybe? Or do we have to share that one over there?
No, I'm, no, but you're on the right track, but no, it's from here and I've given permission to share screen.
Okay, I think we're saying it's available. Can you find it or no?
Oh, there we go.
All right.
My hand. Okay, give me a minute here and I hit the share.
Perfect.
Okay, let's get this started. Hopefully, you will be able to see my screen.
We can see it.
Okay, can you see where it says Up Safety PE Solution?
We see it. Wow, it's very big and we can see it, Jody.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much for inviting us to present today. We're thrilled to have the opportunity to show you the Up Safety Parking Management Solution and demonstrate how we can assist you with your parking operation. My name is Jody Vakas. I have been with T2 Systems for 16-plus years and I get really excited and passionate about talking about parking as it's really my goal to simplify parking for you while enhancing the parking experience for your customers. I'd like to kind of go over a little bit today what sets us apart as a company, then we're going to talk a little bit about our hardware and the way we handle enforcement, our admin file, and then the patron facing portal, and then I'll show you a couple additional services we offer as well. If you want to ask questions as they come to mind or if you want to wait to the end, you know, whatever you all prefer works for me.
Thank you.
So Peggy.
So a little background about us. T2 has been in the parking industry since 1994. So we have 30-plus years of experience helping towns and cities and universities and hotels and airports and private operators manage their parking operations. Parking is all we do. We have a multitude of service offerings that are scalable, which really enables you to kind of start with the functionality that you need now and easily add new functionality in the future as your needs evolve. This is just an overview of the various services that we do offer. In the interest of keeping on schedule today, I'm not going to go into detail on all of our offerings. Instead, we're going to focus on enforcement permits, mobile pay, and then the pay station kiosks. Our solutions can solve all your parking challenges and achieve all your goals because everything is integrated in one system, which makes parking more efficient for your team and certainly more cost-effective for the tenant. So what I think sets us apart and what is awesome about our solution is that it's easy to use and understand. It's very intuitive. There's a lot of checkboxes and free-form areas that you can just type in what you want to change and that's very easy to do. I always let customers know, you know, software and hardware and technology is amazing, but if it's difficult for your team and your staff to use and understand, you're not going to get the full benefit of that. So when we developed our hardware and software, we kept that in the back of our minds that let's make this really easy for people to use. We have a fantastic dashboard with analytics and our report builder again is really easy to use and make changes. We do also offer full hardware and software support, so you should not experience any downtime. You have your own dedicated project manager who will work with you and your team to do the full implementation, and you'll also have your own trainer who will make sure that the entire team is trained before you go live. After training, you also have access to our support team, which is available to you 24 hours a day, seven days a week, three dinners, 55 days a year. We know you might work every day, so we are available to help with anything, whatever need, need some assistance. We also offer robust permit functionality. That is something that you would decide to take advantage of down the road. It's included in our software and there's no additional cost to do permits. So that would be if residents who want to sell permits to residents or do a guest permit or daily print, whatever that might look like. Again, we not only support our software, but we also support the hardware you use, which again simplifies things for you and allows us to take care of you each and every time. And then we grow kind of as you grow. All the functionality is included in our very reasonably priced solution and we release software upgrades often with new functionality based on customer feedback. And again, these improvements are all included at no extra cost.
Jody, are you, okay, what was your question?
Jody, this is Michelle Henson speaking.
Yes ma'am.
What we were looking for is very, very specific information regarding public parking, for instance, what's done at Obith Beach, street parking very specifically. We don't have the opportunity to go into a more private-type parking thing. We're looking specifically street-side public parking.
Sure, that's included in all, in everything I'm discussing today. So whether it's on street, lots, off-street, what have you, all what I'm discussing is all encompassed in that.
Understood. We just want to narrow it to public.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So regarding the general architecture of our solution, everything is synced in real-time. So when you issue a citation out in the field, it is instantly uploaded into the cloud and then info on our patron-facing portal is added. So the second a parking citation is issued in a lot, on-street, what have you, the patron can find it and pay for it online, and then your people in the back office will have access to that citation, any photographs, any recordings, any videos that are associated with that instantaneously. So we're going to talk real quick about hardware so you can see what that looks like. So there's a couple of options here. On the far left, you'll see our Samsung Galaxy Note 20 with a separate Bluetooth printer and that you can clip on your belt or you can wear shoulder strap. And then alternatively, on the right, is our all-in-one XF device. And what's great about the XF device, it has a scanning mechanism on the top that allows your enforcement team to scan a license plate, which you'll kind of see right in this video. So you'll see where an enforcement officer will scan a plate and that video on the far right is the information that will come back to them after he scans. So when numbers are put into the handheld or the officer scans the plate, the system will automatically cross-reference to determine if this vehicle has paid at a parking kiosk, have they used mobile payments, do they have a valid permit, are they a scofflaw? So all this information will be in real-time coming to your enforcement officer. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome. This is just a quick example. You can kind of see what the ticket would look like. So our ticket stock is polyvinyl, doesn't run, it doesn't get bit, if it gets wet and it doesn't tear or rip. So you can kind of see on the far right, it's pretty foolproof. We would put your logo, your font, whatever information you want on that citation, and then at the bottom, you can even add a QR code. And then you'll see in the center where you can even add the violator's license plate. Again, pictures kind of worth a thousand words. So that's just an example of what the ticket stock would look like. Again, I'm not going to keep this pretty high level because of time. So we include a lot in our solution. We have pre-built reports and again, all simple and easy for your staff to utilize and send out. This just shows what the patron portal looks like. Again, your customer would log into that, they can pay their citation there, they could purchase a permit there. We are fully PCI DSS Level 1 compliant and SOC Type 2 compliant. So again, security is very important to us as I'm sure it is to all of you. This just review, this is what I mentioned about our service level agreement, one hour of service time. Our support team is amazing. They typically get back with you much shorter than even an hour. So again, we just want to make sure you're aware that you have a lot of support behind our product. Timeline for implementation, typically about 90 days to implement, once you would give us the go-ahead that you want to move forward with our solutions. Training again, we handle all the training virtually. The handhelds are sent out in advance, so your team will have them for the training session. And now I want to kind of quickly talk about the two other options, mobile pay and then also the pay stations. So this is for mobile payment solution and why I love this so much is that you don't have to download it. It's a text-to-park. So how does it work? Pretty straightforward. Parkers will use onsite signage. Kind of see an example of what that signage looks like in the lower right-hand corner. And basically, parkers see that, they'll text the code, in this example, T2SYS to that five-digit number, 25023, and they will gain access to the platform. They can also scan the QR code below that 25023 if they would prefer to do that. Both methods will return a URL code in response. So that URL code will take parkers to a website that looks and feels like an app where they're going to enter their plate number and their payment information. Again, this is just a visual representation, so you kind of see what it looks like. And they'll go ahead and, once they make payment, that payment is settled, the money goes directly into your account and your parkers get a digital receipt in their email. Basically, this also shows how the transaction works in the middle in second screen. And what's nice about it, once they do this for the first time, that information gets tokenized, which means the next time they go into paper parking, all their license plate, credit card information is already there. So you kind of get the benefit of having an app without having to download. You kind of see on the pay station, we put a decal, so again, they can physically touch the pay station in paper parking or they can use their phone. So you're giving customers a couple different options to pay for parking. If you would like to add a convenience fee, the city can do that, the town can do that as well, and then that additional revenue would be sent directly to the city. And then finally, we've got some pay station options for you. So both of our pay stations are ADA, PCI compliant hardware solutions. Units are constructed from a 12-gauge stainless steel and are sprayed with an anti-corrosion coating. We have these units in Alaska, Hawaii, the Jersey Shore, the Colorado Rockies, the Arizona Desert, and everywhere in between. We test these units, they do amazing. I like to say they're kind of workhorses. I've got units out there currently that are 10 to 15 years old and they work amazing. They say seven to 10 years, but if you maintain them kind of like a car, they'll work for you for a very long time. Payment options are flexible. You can allow coins, bills, credit cards, contactless payments, Google, Apple wallets. You can provide coupon codes if you want to offer some discounts to residents or special events coming into town. Power options, again, you can do solar, you can do AC hardwired. Communications would be all real-time for payment processing. You can do wireless, so like an AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, or even Ethernet. All units can be configured to support pay-by-license plates. Most towns are using the pay-by-plate because it's really kind of the easiest way to handle enforcement, but we also include pay-by-space and pay-in-dislike. You can use a combination of all three, one, the other, whatever you choose to do. And finally, the backend pay stations are managed by something called T2 Iris. And Iris is really the brains of the pay station and this is really our cloud-hosted system that allows you to organize your network of pay stations and mobile payment locations and that allows you to monitor all the key performance indications across the network. It gives you the health of the pay station. How's the battery doing? Does it need you paper? Once you set a threshold, maybe once it has $300 in it, somebody needs to be notified out of your team to come and collect. Everything has a audit trail and a stamp and it's all managed in the backend cloud environments. You can schedule rates in advance for special events, holidays, if you want to do free parking on the Fourth of July. The great thing is, it's as simple as scheduling a meeting and outlook, that's what it looks like. You drop and drag, you start the times and end dates, and then after that special day, it immediately goes back to what your current parking is. Again, super easy to use. So that, my friends, is everything. Hopefully, I stayed close to time. What questions do you all have?
Well, I would recommend you sending us over some pricing or a quotation. We'll make a determination of how many kiosks that we would consider having, but it's something that I think we need to, from my perspective anyhow, a direction we want to go. So I would ask you, what's the next step?
No, great question, thank you. So typically, what we do is we schedule a time to come onsite and the reason we do that, sir, is because we like to take a look at the downtown areas, the lots. Where are you thinking you would like to potentially put the pay station kiosks or mobile pay? And we kind of want to walk the area, look at the traffic flow, and determine what makes sense. The nice thing with a pay station kiosk is you don't need as many of them. We can really kind of clean up your landscape. Typical rule of thumb is about every one to 13 spaces on street, you only need one pay station. In a lot, you typically only need one. So we can come onsite, we can actually bring a pay station if you'd like to see it. We also can bring along our enforcement handheld, so you can see what that looks like. But that would be certainly the next step if that would work for you.
How's the board feel? Want to take a look at them? I think we, I think we do need to see it. We'd like to get you out here to take a look at our streets and so I would say, let's wrap this up and you schedule, schedule a meeting with Michelle and we'll have you out here and take a tour of the town.
Sounds good. I really appreciate everybody's time today and if you think of any questions or need anything, please send our way.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Piner. I just have one question, just a concern. Hypothetically, I live in Georgia and I don't care about the fine that you gave me, by parking, what happens to that ticket that you just gave me and I live in Georgia?
So again, so you're saying you visited Maryland, you got a ticket?
Yes.
And then you go back to Georgia?
Yeah, and I don't care about the Elton's fines.
Nope, you kind of broke up.
I don't care about the Elton's fines and what did you guys do to make sure that we get our money that you set up for us?
So we tracked that ticket and what we do is, we have letter templates, so if somebody doesn't pay within, let's say it's your 30-day window, you determine, you know, what that window looks like. We will start sending out letters. And then at some point, you know, if you do not pay that, let's say after 90 days, we have a full citation processing and collections unit at T2. We can work with you and handle that as well. So we actually kind of can take the citation from A all the way to Z if that's something you want us to do.
When you say work with me or us, I don't want to tie up the town employees to go back and forth to court, back and forth for this one little ticket that's going to get me $15. That's what I'm trying to figure out, what exactly the steps that you guys are going to take.
And we do. And there are late fees that you can add on to offset some of those costs. So again, depending on what you're wanting us to do, we can, we can work with the town to do all and from A to Z or anywhere in between.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we'll do, is we'll get you in touch with Michelle and we'll schedule you to come to the, to our town.
Sounds good. You'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you guys so much for the presentation.
You're most welcome. Have a great day.
All right, thank you. All right, perfect, thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, Lou, you are up.
Yes, ordinance 1-2024. This is the ordinance prepared by council that amends the town code to allow collective bargaining for non-sworn employees, essentially all employees except sworn police officers. And it's presented today for introduction and if accepted for introduction today, it can be adopted at the meeting on April 5th. If it's adopted at that point in time, it will be effective April 2024.
Very good. It's a pretty lengthy ordinance, so what we're going to, I'm going to ask the board for a motion to accept ordinance 1-2024, collective bargaining of our labor code, and this is for introduction purposes only. So moved. We have a motion.
Okay.
And a second. As far as discussion goes, does anyone from the board have any discussion in regards to the ordinance 1-2024 for introduction purposes only? Okay, I know it's going to be, I know that we have a lot of our town employees here today. This will be the first time that you've gotten an opportunity to see this. I want to make everyone aware that these copies are going to be available for you by the end of the day. Just come down to Town Hall and grab one, take a look at it. Once again, we're not adopting anything today, but we're going to ask you for your input. So if you have any questions, once you have an opportunity to read this, if you could email them to our, and I'll give you that information also, but it's at thehuman/resources@elta.org and we will address every question that you have. You can also schedule a time to meet with our HR director and he can go over if there's any pertinent questions that you have. So that's kind of our comments. We won't answer any questions today, just like with any adoption of any of this, and they can be, you'll have it in your hands by the end of the day. So we have a motion.
May I correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the next meeting is April 3rd.
April 3rd.
April 3rd, I'm sorry.
What did you say?
27th. I think I said the 5th.
Oh.
The 3rd then would be effective April 23rd if it's adopted on that date.
Very good. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And this is going to be available to everyone out there today. All right, Lou, you have something else?
Yeah, the only other, the other thing I have is the replacement. I think Charles Bromwell talked to the board about this earlier, about replacing the roof in nine, carrying units on the job. And we received the [inaudible]. And we use our money, we have a standard allowance for it allocated for the government fund that we can use for this. So they have to work to approve this work so we can get it scheduled. But we take 14 weeks, big time, just on the [inaudible]. So probably be early fall before it begins.
So just to clarify, and I know that Chip had mentioned it to me, this includes the new roof on the portion that needed to be redone and it's going to include the nine new units which haven't been replaced from day one.
Other than being repaired.
Yes, and I know that there was a definite need to have this done. So is there any, I guess, is there, you're looking for a motion to approve this, Lou? Do we have a motion to approve this proposal with Cyberlynch?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion in general with this? And I don't think Chip's on here, is he? I don't see him. Okay. It's a pretty detailed quotation and seemed to be pretty fair to me. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I had. Except I wanted to come and I sent an email to the board about the ponds were closed at 8:00.
Did they sell out in seconds? Did they sell out in seconds?
Yeah, they did. Press and hollow all the time, so it was a good deal.
That's fantastic. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of action out there here real soon. Today, maybe. All right, let's see. Ah, let's see, the first thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to say that we had our filing deadline on Thursday for Town Council. We had two positions, Commissioner Gibbons and Commissioner Piner, both their seats were up. And guess what, guys? No one's running against you. So I guess we're going to have Charlie and Earl for four more years.
Who wins?
So we will still have an election, of course. The election is on May the...
May the 14th.
May the 14th is the election. We'll host the election here. It's going to, could be possibly a little bit confusing because the county election, their primary election is the same day. So your town residents will have to come in here to cast their vote and then also go to their polling place. But hopefully, we're going to need one vote for each of you.
Yeah, we're going to need one or two apiece.
One or two apiece. That would be good. And I think there's a little, I think Charlie wants to make sure he really stops Earl this time he said. Okay, I wanted to mention that the mayor's...
A car stick.
Oh, there you go. The mayor's Lucky Charms race went off on Sunday. We had a great crowd. I think we ended up well over 50 participants in the Lucky Charm and I can tell you what's unique about it and I actually am very glad that we're allowed to use the Patriots Glen Golf Course for that day, because if we would have had to use our Meadow Park, I don't think that we would have been in any shape to have the 5K this year based on the multiple floodings that we had early in the year. So I think it's a very challenging course out there and the participants absolutely love that site. So maybe even after I'm gone as mayor, it'll be, continue to keep the Lucky Charms race going. We have a fishing rodeo coming up and I know Rob will probably continue to talk a little bit about that. I know that it's a great day for, I think it's a great day for our town to shine on that fishing rodeo. I love everything that it brought to, has been bringing to the table. I know last year, we had how many kids?
170.
170 kids participated in that and this year, I think it's even going to be better and greater and more kids. So we might have to dig the pond out a little bit wider this year so we can have more people to be around it, right? But, you know, I think we need to get a little bit of, I'd like to ask the board to make a $1,000 donation for the rodeo so that we can have that money on hand available to continue to bring in some equipment and some gifts for the kids that day. So is $1,000 okay with everybody?
I'm in favor.
So I don't think I need to have a motion on that, so hopefully, we have $1,000 in our donations and we would like to request a check, go directly for the rodeo.
Who's the check table? I'm sorry.
You can actually make it out to Team Elton's Fishing Rodeo. I've set up a bank account with an EIN number and everything, so it'll go right in there.
You have to tell Diane. You need something.
You'll have to get that information, maybe you can get a request or we can make, we'll make the request, but we need to get your EIN number for the, that'd be great.
We'll do it. I'll give it to you today.
All right, Commissioner Piner, anything to that?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Gibbons?
Page is closing up that town.
Who?
I thought that was...
The Palat Page, yes, yes, they are closing.
Could you stand just a little? I just have to read that this morning, so if you would, would you just brief us?
Yes, the new owner of the Palat Page, who took over seven months ago, also owns a second business in Rising Sun, and she has two small children and realized she cannot run both businesses. So I did work with her to put information out to the Maryland State Parks Council, to directors at the other AME districts to see if anybody might step up and be interested in it, but we have not had any, anybody come through. And we found out just three weeks before she said she was closing, so there hasn't been a lot of time to, you know, really try to do much about it, but they are closing at the end of next week.
Oh my.
Yeah.
Wow.
Very sad.
Yeah, it was in there and it was so nice.
It is.
A lot of people on Facebook are saying, you know, the artists are upset, they didn't get a lot of time to find out about it. They, they didn't get a lot of time to, to find out about it. Um, but like I said, um, Christie, who runs the gallery currently has two small children and she just couldn't, couldn't match it anymore. So if there is anybody out there, um, have them contact the Palatton Page. They can talk to Christie and, uh, she would be willing to sell for what is owned on the business currently, uh, which is owed to the previous owner, owed to the previous owners.
Is that the building, the whole building?
Not the building. The building is.
Just the business.
Brett Clolo, but just the, the business itself, all of, everything that's in there, the shelving, the tables, everything that is, uh, you know, part of the, running the business.
Very good.
Thank you, Roger.
Commissioner, anything?
I want to, no.
Commissioner, anything?
I'd like to thank you all for the very generous donation to the fishing rodeo. This is one of the, the best events of the year for the town, I believe. And we're all involved and the kids love it. We have kids coming from Rock Hall and Dover. I mean, they're coming from all over now and we're not going to turn them away. These are people coming into our town. This year I'm adding a casting course, which is going to be fun for the kids and the adults alike. It's going to be set up like a putt putt course with different challenges at every hole. It can be a lot of fun. And again, thank you for the donation. I do have access, yes. Um, and I'm still looking for volunteers and I'm still looking for donations of prizes to give away to the children.
I can help with that.
You can with.
Sunny, yeah, sunny will donate.
Perfect. All right, we'll talk about that, Brian. Thank you.
That is wonderful. Free hot Italian subs all day. I like it. I love it. Very good. All right, uh, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for anyone that has anything to say for the good of the town. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and please.
Pado for 137 miles.
Thank you, Pat.
I had a question about when Lou was talking about using the ARPA funds to replace the units on the roof and possibly the roof. Are those ARPA funds available to, for maintenance on any property that the town owns?
Uh, I, I would say that's.
I don't understand the question.
The question was, uh, can the ARPA funds be used for any maintenance on any of the town properties?
Depends. If it's standard allowance money, they utilize anything that we use under the general fund. If it says there are certain portions of that money, it's only eligible for order of sorts projects. One of the projects will be the Route 40 interconnection, for example.
So, so it's a yes and no question, but I would say we have, we have.
Can I give you the specific what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Would that be easier to answer?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, uh, obviously you probably know, Elpley. The outside of the main house is in total disrepair and has been for years now. I know one of their goals is they'd like to have weddings down there. If I was a bride looking for a place, I wouldn't even look at the place. We got an estimate from, uh, based on how much it would cost to redo the outside of the main house and to do it correctly. Okay, which means remove all the old paint, get it all primed and ready to go. And the estimate was $34,000, which obviously Elpley, he doesn't have that kind of money.
Well, I think that, you know, the, my comment would be is put a request together and bring it to the board. Have Elplanning send a request. I'm not sure, uh, we can or we cannot, but I would say we would need to see a request.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
It would be an earned budget, so it probably would be eligible for ARPA because ARPA is committed funds in fiscal 25. So you'd have to use other funds for that, probably, but we could look at it.
We'll have a big fundraiser. We can get it.
Hey, if you get sick to the fundraiser, we can raise some money.
Lou said he's going to get Taylor Swift to come down. There we go. Anyone else have anything to say? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Mariah Sane and, um, I talked to Michelle. Yesterday she came down and talked to me about the box in the front of my store. I left them that way, went to the Hope Hour yesterday. Um, showed him where the discarded needles are. He seen them, took pictures and everything. Um, he has a team coming today to sweep the area to make sure that they keep happening. But that box, okay, as Michelle said yesterday, if we can make it smaller, the trees dead. Multiple trees are dead. Alicia from the Alliance. Um, you know, we like the trees. We want it to be vibrant. We want it to feel fresh when you come down Main Street, but you can't do that with that tree. And the shrubage or whatever them bushes are that's in the box in front of my store, it's a really good hiding place for them to throw the discarded needles and whatever else, you know, just trash that's in there. So as we spoke yesterday about making the block smaller, I'd be down for that with a live tree.
I had a thought on that a couple of days ago. Because if you have any ground cover at all, it does provide a hiding spot, a place to ditch needles, drops, whatever. And I thought it'd be nice if it was just a mulch bed with maybe some solar lighting in it and nothing to conceal anything.
Um, it would be nice to decorate seasonally. Like right now, I definitely need my window with, you know, eastern flowers and just to make it feel fresh when you first turn the corner. Because as we all know, downtown Main Street doesn't have the best.
Sure, it's all going down there.
And with the whole parking thing coming along, I was walking to my fellow neighbors, Lee from the Gloomery, Becky from T3, Alicia from the Alliance, my neighbor, um, Andrew from the Barbershop, uh, we all know Isabel, will not appreciate the paid park with the downtown. Because we are grab and go. Parking is limited, I believe. If you guys read the Facebook comments, you'll see that the first thing people throw like, oh, there's nowhere to park. So now we're limited with parking. We're going to charge where, and we're limited on things that bring people to our town. As a business owner, we want to flourish. I mean, we want to help the town flourish, but we can't when we're getting stopped.
Well, I'd just like to jump in, um, and, and I wish Alicia was here, Alicia was here. But that's, the Elton Alliance is our tool and you should give them your concerns. And when they bring them here, I don't think we've, we've, I think the only time we've ever said no for anything was, uh, the, the farmer's market. We were going to paint the legs different colors one time, I think. But I think if you can get their, your concerns to them, I, I don't think that we've ever been, uh, not listening.
Right, well, no, no, I'm not saying I listen. This is what my side of me.
Yes.
But from what I've gathered so far, I just feel like, yeah, a private court, sure. The side street of the hospital, yeah, but the little drag of downtown.
Well, we're not really talking about putting meters there.
No, okay.
Well, it wasn't my intent.
Okay, well, that's why I was just trying to hear.
Yeah, but I'm curious about the, the box and the tree. It's dead?
The tree is dead.
The tree is dead. I think all those trees on Main Street are dead.
Why do we have dead trees?
Because they're just not, the, the roots aren't deep enough to go down. So it just, all the trees.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking.
Basically.
These guys like why are they dead?
It's the, the environment. I mean, it's three trees around there. They're limited, they're limited, they're frozen sun.
How long have they been dead?
Well, they were dead last year.
With the process now, trying to figure out a tree to replace it with, some, some of the board, but that's our try. We're having difficulty to buy.
Yeah, but if a tree won't grow there historically, I don't know, putting a new tree is going to change it.
That's one of the challenges there with the, uh, you know, just the, the nature of it, the compaction.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, listen, I would, I would like us to look into some solar lighting for these boxes instead of trees. Um, especially because the trees have been known to block the security members that we've installed. There's got to be another option and it would also dress up Main Street.
I like the feel when you drive down northeast Main Street. You feel like you're in a town, an older town. You drive down us and I think the weekend stores, um, whoever would be in charge of getting a hold of them should be contacted to fix up the outside, to make it a little bit more appealing for me because that's what it comes in. The awning to Annie's is terrible. It's ripped, it's molded and it's just not presentable. You know, like I want to be kind, I'm first on the board. So I'm doing what I can do, what I can do to make, oh, wow, look, it's okay. It, you know, let me go up further, you know, and I'm like, forget, I'm not even worried about, you know, the house. It's a fire. There's nothing that's there. Okay? But we're all trying to just make it homey, comfortable, fresh, family oriented. So if we could just have some help with that.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Margie Gleistone from the Elton Alliance. I did want to say that Alicia would be here, but she is, um, in the Cecil Leadership Courses right now, so she's out every Wednesday. So I've been coming in on her behalf. Um, if you like, we will get some information from the businesses for you, but I think it's also very important for the businesses to come and talk to you directly about their concerns. Um, and we will, you know, do our best to work with them. But I think we also need some sort of, um, uh, the code enforcement to the buildings on Main Street. We can't find who these people are. We've tried. We've tried to reach out to people. But those owners of those businesses that are leaving these derelict, you know, buildings need to be fined and that needs to be taken care of. We can't do that. That's on the town. Thank you.
I agree. And I agree with you.
And we're discussing the board.
Hey, it wouldn't hurt maybe to have a workshop with the Alliance to see, you know, let's, let's address your needs and let's see what we can handle and how we're going to, how we can make it happen. I, I know Jeannie has a thing about these trees on, on Main Street, but I, I can't imagine there's not a solution out there that we can, that we can work out. Either replacement or, you know, something, something's got to be able to happen. You can't be required to have trees that are dead or will not grow or hazardous boxes, you know, that we can't be required to have that there.
And, you know, there was a period when Mary Doe was in office that, um, we had planters put up and down Main Street, but, you know, the onus was on the building owners and the businesses to take care of those. And that only goes so far. So we need some way of, if we're going to have, you know, a beautiful Main Street, flowers, plants, whatever, there needs to be a way that all of that gets taken care of.
Um, I also would like to talk about the alleyway between, so it's me, the barbershop and then the rodeo. Okay, um, I don't know if that's town property or if it's my landlord owns it, but I would like to see about putting, um, some type of fence thing there so they can still get their garbage cans over them out because that's where a lot of the problem of the needles and, I mean, the things we find back there and stuff.
Yeah, that would be, anything to that alleyway would be the property owner. But we should probably make sure that we don't notice before I make that comment. But I'm like 99% sure it would be the property owner. And I think that's a great idea. It could be 100%.
Comments on Facebook are the trash.
Yep.
There are not a lot while people live upstairs. I don't know what they can do, but that's not my problem. Maybe you all can find solutions, but I don't know. Have the trash truck go around back and get them? I don't know. But it is up.
It is. Main Street. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I, I said, I'm, I'm kind of in jest here a little bit because we talked about a couple of different times eliminating trashcans altogether on Main Street and finding a dumpster somewhere, uh, that the residents that live upstairs could take it and, and dump it. But it's, it's, it's an ongoing battle. And I think that, uh, our first few months of this has been very good. And I think now it's, maybe we start looking at these things again.
We collect in the back, exactly. So that's where we want to get the cans off Main Street. We collect in the back, so it's off. You can't sit on Main Street. You've got plenty of room, like, well, off House shouldn't miss a lot. That's how the trash collects it. Going further up, uh, Main Street, we would love to collect from the back also. We're, uh, right next to the 150 East, but probably up there, if it floods, you can't get, it turns into an island. So that's, that's, that's the quantity amount. So that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I will, I will tell you, beautiful Middletown. They're looking so good down there. But if you go down their Main Street that looks like our Main Street, trashcans all along the street, up against the buildings, because they can't get them in the back either.
I just don't want downtown, Middletown Main Street to be forgotten because they're building bigger. With everywhere, even in Middletown, they're building bigger and it's just going to get overlooked.
Yeah, the same problem.
Yeah, that's my point. That's the same problem, obviously.
They're exactly worth.
And in the summertime, people outside, they're eating. It's worth it.
Well, we're going to come up with some solutions. Cause we're good. We're all good here. We're going to figure this thing out.
Well, I'll tell you what, as somebody who's been on Main Street for dang near 40 years now, I can tell you that I've seen great times, not so great times. And we have definitely been on an upswing over the past five years or so. It's getting better. It's going to continue to get better. I guarantee it. More people are coming downtown than ever. We're constantly seeing new faces. It's a constant struggle. Some of these issues and there's just nothing we can do about it. And, and nobody wants the town to succeed more than we do. You know, that's why we're in these positions. It's tough sometimes, but I promise you, we're doing what we can.
I want to comment that the Elton Music Hall is such a success.
A big success.
Bacon and I happen to know someone that goes there frequently and it's a really great, successful use of downtown.
Yes, it is. Streets are constantly lined with cars anymore.
Yeah, we do. I like it.
I just, I just think we should have a little tighter partnership going, you know, to where we can get the code enforcement down there. Cause I agree with Margie. There's a couple awnings down there that should be taken down. They're, they're terrible.
Yeah.
They are not. They can't.
Molded, will do.
We need to get rid of it.
They need to come down. They do need to come down.
I agree 100%.
Okay, is there anyone on the Zoom that has anything to say for the good of the town? I see. All right, Pat, you got one more comment?
Okay, uh, well, she.
That's it?
She. Okay, second question. Now, she mentioned Minnehem. Last week with Margie and I and our husband, when we were out duckering the shamrocks and doing same practice, they say, I noticed behind Minnehem, and it was inside the fence, there's a whole lot of, uh, new lumber. Like somebody's getting ready to do something in there. Do you guys have any idea if there's movement down there now or?
I haven't heard of anything, but it's.
We've seen the, uh, material. I would assume it belonged to the apartments.
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, okay.
Cause they've been in there working pretty steadily. They're probably just staging it there.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be.
It's not Minnehem.
No, unfortunately, it's, it's not. I doubt.
It always has.
Yes, we can. All right, meeting adjourned.